Councilmember Nelson.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Staley is excused. Councilmember Watkins.
Here.
Councilmember Waite.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. This evening Pastor Shaw of Trinity Episcopal Church will give our invocation. I'd ask to stand for that and remain standing for the pledge.
Let us pray. Almighty Creator, you proclaim your truth in every age by many voices. Direct in our time, we pray those who speak where many listen and write what many read, that they may do their part in making the hearts of this people wise, its minds sound, and its will righteous. And in your goodness send down your spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice on those who hold office in this city, that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people. Amen.
Amen. Please join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The council may go into executive session for legal counsel in accordance with ARS 38431.03A to discuss any agenda item. The following items may be discussed, considered, and decisions made relating thereto. The first order of business is approval of the minutes.
Mayor, do you want to just remove or tell the public that we're removing several items from the agenda? Or that have been removed?
City Manager Foggan, I think that is a really good idea.
Okay.
Would you like to do that?
Yes, thank you. Just so that everybody following along knows, under the consent agenda, three D has been removed. And also, under department reports, six A, we will not be covering six A as well. Those, six A will come back at a later time. And of course, the bid for trucks is changing.
Okay, so that was on the consent agenda. We will remove item D.
Yep.
And we will also remove in that item six A
Correct.
from tonight's agenda.
Yep.
Okay, thank you very much. Did we have minutes for approval?
No.
Okay, I think we should announce that, I think we have, do we have Wi-Fi? I don't, I don't think any of our Wi-fis are working, so. Okay. Good, thank you. Okay. So the next order of business is call to the public. We have two people signed up to speak for call to the public. And the first one was Harley Pettit.
Mayor, council. My name's Harley Pettit, resident of Kingman. I'm here to eulogize the passing of my friend and community-spirited friend Doug Dickmeyer. Many people knew him as Big Guy or Huggy Bear. And in his wife's words, he's always had a thought or an idea for Kingman and would speak out at these city council meetings. A truer friend would be harder to find, as if you needed help, he would lend a helping hand. He'd be there for you. I want to ask for a few moments of silence so those that knew him can honor him with a prayer. We miss you, Doug Dickmeyer. Amen.
Mr. Pettit, thank you so much for those comments. And I'm sure the council extends condolences to all of his family. The next call to the public is Michael Ladd.
Mayor, city council. My name's Michael Ladd, I'm a resident of Kingman. And in light of the previous eulogy, I don't think anything I could say would be appropriate at this time, so I decline.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Ladd. Is there anyone else that would like to speak at call to the public? We'll move on to consent agenda. All matters here are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Would anyone on the council like to remove any of the items? Other, D is already removed. Since there seems to be no one wanting to remove anything, do I, I would entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda, approve the consent agendas, item A through C.
Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda, items A through C.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion has been made and seconded by Councilwoman Mello Keener. And all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. Next order of business is old business. And this is the procurement code. The council directed staff to update the city's procurement code. This is a comprehensive update that expands the procurement code to allow for better comprehension and ease of use. It does include a section regarding excluding the city's TPT rate in the calculation of some purchases. Staff recommends approval. Manager Foggan, or Mr. Cooper?
Yeah.
Mr. Cooper.
Something I've been working on for quite some time. The original task was to actually address the TPT exclusion in some procurement purposes, purchases. And then what I decided to do is, you know, ask the council if I could expand that and just do a complete rewrite. So what we did is, we did look at, I know Councilman Ling, or Vice Mayor Lingefelter was looking at the ABA model procurement code. And we would definitely have modeled some of the language after that. Not all of it, because some of that language is a little more broadly defined to fit that universal scope of being a model code, as well as addressing some construction issues that, that we operate under separately. So most of the construction procurement is going to be picked up under Title 34 in the state, Arizona revised statutes. When we were doing this, we were starting to work closely with HAVISU as well. And we, at one point, were looking at maybe getting a procurement officer that worked for multiple cities to try and work together. So a lot of this is modeled off of some of what HAVISU had done, and they had recently done their code. Like I say, we made some changes to bring it into line with what we're looking at and to work well with the city of Kingman. The TPT exemption issue, there's a lot of concern, people want us to do a preference. But you really can't do preferences, those have been ruled unconstitutional. The closest we could really get into is where you, you don't address the, our city's TPT rate when you're competing, when there's these competitions amongst other Arizona vendors. We can't go across state lines, because then we bring in US constitutional issues. But if we keep it within the state, then we can at least address that issue. And that might help with some of the, some of the close calls that we have here. Overall, this has been reviewed by staff probably more times than they care to remember. But I think it's a pretty comprehensive code that addresses a lot of fixes that we, we have in our current code. It makes it much more user-friendly. So I guess that's where I'm at right now, and if you have any questions.
Are there any questions of Mr. Cooper? Council, Vice Mayor Lingefelter?
No, thank you, Carl. I've had an opportunity to go through this, and it looks really good. I would ask just for a couple of things, as far as maybe if it would be all right to, to format what we have, kind of following the model code for state and local governments, it's just easier to follow. When I was reviewing the document that we have, one of the things that you would accomplish by doing that is putting all the legal and contractual remedies all in one section. It looked like some of those things were kind of scattered through, and it may be, it may be difficult for people that need to use that code to find exactly what they're looking for. Also, maybe a separate section for sole source and a separate section for emergency procurements. Right now, those are, there's like one paragraph
Right.
for each of those, and then just kind of divide those out into each one of their own. And then maybe just an index at the front for easy use. But altogether, the content looked really good.
Yeah, not a problem, I'm just trying to write. I will address that.
And I just had one follow-up on the, the issue where we hear about preference. Are you, I mean, you get into things like reciprocal preference, and it could actually harm your local vendor. So if you have a construction company that's from Kingman, and, and we were to have some sort of a preference policy, if you ever go to like another city in Arizona that has a reciprocal preference policy, then that can actually harm them in doing business in another city. So it's something you really have to be careful about when you're.
Yeah, I'm not a fan of the preference, actually, because it, I mean, the idea is you need to get the cheapest rate that you need to get, and you have to look at how that affects each other. But I know there's that interest to at least deal with that TPT issue, so.
Thank you.
And thankfully, it's not a, hopefully, these purchases should be narrower in scope. And we don't have that many, that I recall, that have been close anyways. So I don't think, excuse me, I don't think it'll be a huge impact. But every once in a while, every three years, you get one that's within that, that range.
I know you guys worked really hard on it, so thank you very much.
Oh, not a problem.
I add my thanks to that, Mr. Cooper. Are there any other comments or questions for Attorney Cooper?
Mayor, so can we vote on it tonight, or do we need to send it back to staff to make those corrections?
I think we could vote on it with the understanding that the, the format is going to be aligned with the.
The American Bar Association's model code for state and local.
Let me fix it, then have you vote on it?
I think so.
Yeah.
You'd like to fix it?
I would prefer to have it that way. That.
I mean, if it's just formatting.
Well, but in the form of editing, things can be changed, I think it's.
I would rather bring it back.
Okay. Well, then, we don't need to vote on it tonight.
Okay.
If that's okay.
No vote is necessary?
No, no vote's necessary, this is the direction.
Thank you. Okay, new business. Historic Route 66 Association Lease Powerhouse Retail Space Agreement. The Historic Route 66 Association of Arizona desires to invest in a remodel of the suite that the association occupies inside the powerhouse visitor center. The association currently rents the 1,428 square foot space for $500 per month on a month-to-month basis. Its board is seeking to enter into a long-term, 10-year lease agreement with the city of Kingman at a new negotiated rate of $850 per month. This agreement includes an addendum stipulating that the association will contribute up to $10,000 for a new entry sign at the powerhouse and $10,000 for a Route 66 drive-through shield to be located near the powerhouse. Staff recommends approving the proposed lease agreement or recommending an alternate, an alternate long-term lease according to terms set by council, so the association's board may continue with planning a renovation and other long-term operational plans. Mr. Kellogg, over to you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. We worked a long time on this, and just to go through some steps that were taken, the original lease came in and the amount, and we took it before the Economic Development Advisory Commission. They had some concerns about certainly the price of the per-square footage and everything. And then, as you know, Mayor, you were able to meet with the head of the, the chair of that association. And then it was assigned to myself, and I negotiated this contract with the help of the city attorney formatting it, and then with Nikki Seeger on behalf of the Route 66 Association. I think the really key things here are, is that they are preparing and have already gotten bids for a major remodel in the proximity of around $80,000. And the remodel is such that it blends with the, and blends with the powerhouse. The other two terms that were negotiated were money to assist us with the drive-through shield, and the second would be money that will assist us with the new sign for the powerhouses. You know, a couple of years ago, we had a mishap and an accident took the sign out. There'll be some insurance money with that. To add to this, and I think to sweeten the pot, the, when we approached the hoteliers and told them of the nature of this project with the drive-through shield, they also have agreed to step up. We don't know the amount, but I think we can almost get this down to a decent price. I was asked the query, we were asked the question about the shield and the sign. Those will both be brought back to certainly the commission and to the, and ultimately to the council when the design is completed on both of those, so. The nice part about this money is I think that it can enhance the shield. We started out looking at a backlit type of shield. With this money in the hope of the hoteliers and with the 66 Association, we will have a, a pretty ideal situation. They're, they're a good partner. Over the last several years, they've donated certainly to us in, in support of the powerhouse in excess of $70,000 through funds and, you know, the raffling off of the Corvette back in 95, etc., so. And they also are key components of the, the fun run that takes place in HAVISU. They are, at least, and certainly in my estimation, the ideal nonprofit partner. They have the best interests of 66 and, you know, the city of Kingman in mind, so. That's really all I have to say, Mayor, at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Kellogg. Does the, oh, well, does the council have questions for Mr. Kellogg? No? Yes, certainly, Councilwoman.
Sorry, I project. What are they paying now, what have they paid, what are we, we've got the 850, are they paying utilities also with that, or do they?
They pay their own utility bills, yes. The last contract was 2005, they were paying $500 a month at that point, so. The combined figure, if you look at their donation on the part of the $20,000, puts them somewhere around between 70, 71, 72 cents a square foot, so.
Any other questions?
Gary, I have one question. In an email, I just wanted to confirm, it said that from March 2018 to February 2019, the Kingman Visitor Center hosted 166,355 visitors, is that true?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I have one more, Gary. How long have they rented from us?
The relationship started back in, and actually, in when the powerhouse first opened up. But it's since 2005, they've been our partner, yes.
I have a question, sorry.
Councilman Waite?
Was the board not interested in any, in a lease that was less than 10 years? Or was that just a number that they?
I think what they were looking at is, this is probably the most sizable investment that they will have made to date with this $80,000, was to maximize that. I'm sorry, as far as their board is concerned. I know that Nikki will be addressing you in a minute, she may, she may be better able to answer that than myself. But I think it really was the amount of money that they're going to invest in the building.
Okay.
Mr. Kellogg, when I looked at the lease, I thought it was, there's, there's a point in time after five years that there's a decision point as to renew or not for the next five years with a 120-day notice?
At that point, to evaluate and look at, at a, would the rent go up at that particular point and make an adjustment, yes.
And 120-day notice would be required if it were not going to be renewed for.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Vice Mayor?
Just one more question. So looking at the traffic that, I mean, that's pretty heavy foot traffic every year. Did, did staff look at trying to negotiate a percentage lease? You know what a percentage lease is, where there's a base rent?
Net, 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 yes.
And then if they, if they hit like a breakpoint, then they pay like, I think the most common figure is like maybe 7%.
Yeah. We did not, Vice Mayor.
And I ask that question because the last Economic Development Advisory Commission meeting I went to, our tourism manager told the, in response to a question, the commissioners about some marketing and advertising, that he didn't really have a very large budget for that. So I'm just looking to, you know, this is just business, and I, we have a sheet here that talks about all the wonderful things that they do, and that's certainly true. But we need to make sure that we maximize that space for Kingman tourism-specific. So, and another thing that I looked at was, I asked some realtors, and they, I don't know if you spoke with any commercial realtors about what retail space in downtown Kingman is going for. But they told me that it's leasing for 85 cents to a dollar a square foot. So 850 a month would be at the lower, low range of that. So I don't have a problem with the 850 if it were a percentage lease. But I look forward to talking more about that tonight.
Are there other questions? We have some people signed up. And so, thank you, Mr. Kellogg.
Thank you.
The first person I would call is Nikki Seegers.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Nikki Seegers, and I am the Director of Operations at the Historic Route 66 Association of Arizona. I left you all a handout about some accomplishments of the association I'd like to touch on tonight. So what does the Route 66 Association do as a whole? The association manages a passport program which won the Governor's Award for Collaborative Marketing in 2011. We have printed and distributed 180,000 Route 66 Arizona passports to tourist information centers, business members, and visitors. Passports are currently picked up and stamped by the visitor's center in Kingman, not by the gift shop. It's a great souvenir for everyone traveling on Route 66 in Arizona. The association distributes Route 66 brochures in over 240 locations through a paid distribution company, in addition to offering them at member businesses and visitor centers across the state. Since 2003, we have distributed almost 700,000 brochures highlighting Route 66 communities in Arizona. Through our website and our Facebook page, we're able to touch, to reach potential visitors so they can help plan their trips, gather information, ask questions, and sign up for the fun run. Visitors and fans of the Route 66 Association feel like they're part of a community and continue to share their experiences after their visit. This inspires others to take the same trip. The gift shop allows us to interact with visitors, direct them to communities and businesses along Route 66 in Arizona. For many visitors, the powerhouse is their first stop in Arizona. They're able to gather information about the area, visit the museum to learn about Route 66 history, and purchase a memento to take with them. The marketing of Route 66 communities, including Kingman, has been our mission since the beginning. We do not receive money from the city of Kingman for our operations or the organization of the fun run. In 2016, we released a Route 66 license plate that can be purchased through the MVD. It was named the best new plate in the US by the Automobile License Plate Collectors Association. The plate is a constant reminders to Arizona of the importance of Route 66 in our state. I'll highlight another one of our accomplishments, the driving force behind the National Sea Unic Byway Signage Program in 2006. Through that, we secured an All-American Road designation in 2010, the most distinguished national designation held by only 42 roads in the US. Thank you.
Thank you, Seeger. Next speaker, Tom Spear.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. It's an honor to be here, even though it's this side of the podium. The, what, the things that we've done for the powerhouse were outlined by Mr. Kellogg in the, to the extent of $70,000. Kingman is, or the Route 66 Association of Arizona has also been, been very involved in workforce development. We have contributed over $125,000 in scholarship grants for Kingman kids to go to Kingman schools, namely through MCC. And of course, we have the annual fun run every year, which consistently fills every hotel in the city. It's the only event that, you can ask any innkeeper in the city, it's the only event that does it. And it's done it continually for 80, for 31 years, sorry, I'm not that old. And our participants are about 25% local, and the balance comes from nearby areas, but they also come from Europe. We have a consistent group that shows up from Canada, from France, and from Germany every year. And of course, I don't have to tell you that new money coming into the community is very important. It's better than just rotating the money that exists around. One of the things that Nikki was not able to touch on was our copyright and trademark issues that we're starting to see with Route 66. There is a group in Austria who now has a trademark and copyright on all alcoholic beverages. So that they, and we are monitoring a lawsuit in New Mexico where this is being challenged and taking, taken to higher courts. We are also monitoring the US Patent and Copyright Office so that we can monitor any other use of the shield to make sure that it doesn't get out of hand, that when people request these trademarks, they are for specific things and not something broad like we're dealing with, with the alcoholic beverages. The association has also been very involved in garnering grants. And that is through the designations that we have achieved through the years. We've had over $2 million worth of grants that we have distributed throughout the state. One of the things that we're going to be doing with the revenue from the license plate is we, that's going to be a twofold purpose. We do currently have some logistical issues that we have to take care of. But we are going to be focused on scholarships to put more kids in schools, workforce development, especially in some of the outlying areas on Route 66. And the other thing is, we're going to establish a grant program for improvements on Route 66. Most of the grant funds that we have seen through the years have definitely dried up, and there is not much available. So the association saw that as a challenge, and through our efforts with the MVD, we feel like we can take on a certain amount of that responsibility. And with that, I would entertain any questions.
Any questions? Thank you, thank you, Mr. Spear.
I would also add that we are one of the original tenants for the powerhouse. We were there when it opened. We have been there every day since it opened. And I think now we are the only paying tenant in the powerhouse.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else signed up to speak on this one? That's six. It does look like it. Jordan Perlm. I think she was right the first time.
Good evening, my name is Jordan Perry, I'm the general manager of the Best Western Plus Kings and Suites. Plus Kings Inn and Suites. I've been a Kingman resident here for almost three years now, almost to the date. I've been managing the hotel and with great relationships with the Route 66 Association. I've been on their Tourism Council as well as the Kingman Tourism Council at some point. Without the Route 66 Council being where they're at, these buses that do come through town from all over the world, they don't usually stop in Kingman. The Route 66 Association with the powerhouse has been a great reason for a lot of these buses to come in town and be able to spend the money as Mr. Spears has mentioned. So, moving it, I think, would really disrupt where people have come to notice, especially for our tour bus drivers. Moving it out of that place where it's been for many years, I think, would be a wrong choice. Thank you.
Thank you. I would just like to thank Mr. Kellogg for working with Ms. Seeger, and this, this contract, as I've read it, has truly evolved since we first began discussing it, and I appreciate the efforts that have gone into the discussion of the lease rates and the addendum for the contributions. Really think it's come to a good place. And the Route 66 Association is a, a original tenant, I guess, in, in this powerhouse. I don't, I don't know if it's original, but it's a long-term tenant. And I appreciate the comments from, I'm going to mispronounce your name again, Mr. Perma, Permia? Anyway, it is, it's good to have hoteliers involved, the Route 66 and the city. So, again, I want to offer my thanks and, and I'm, I would just comment that the lease still needs to have an edit to eight hundred and fifty rather than six hundred, just a tiny edit. Are there other comments or questions for Mr. Kellogg about the contract? Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I want to thank, I want to thank the association and they do so many wonderful things. I know everybody in the audience doesn't have this list, but it's, it's two full pages and, you know, I've been in there in their merchandise. If you haven't been in there, it's, they have some really good merchandise in there. So, we certainly want to, want to maintain that partnership and, and keep them in there. What I want to do with my comments is just to make sure that, since it's a City of Kingman facility and we, we market the City of Kingman proper, that we just make sure that the lease is, is fair for the taxpayers and also all the tenants that are downtown too. So, I'm, I don't have a, a problem with the hundred and fifty a month, but I would like to see if maybe staff could go back and work with the association to consider a, a percentage rent, which could be added to the, the small advertising and marketing budget that tourism has right now. That would, that would help the association as well, if we were to bolster our budget. And then the other thing I would say is typically what you see is not a tenured lease, but like a five-year initial term and then a renegotiation at that point for another five years. Perhaps they could, staff could work with them to look at something like that as well.
Mr. Kellogg, is, is, I think that second part is in there, is it not? When I read the lease, I thought I read that in five years it is subject to renegotiation.
Okay.
I think that part.
You're right.
Madam Mayor, if I, if I could just answer that question. At five years, the rate would readjust according to the Consumer Price Index, and then at ten years, it would be up for another renewal at five years. And that's the last rate.
Okay, but doesn't it say at five years that if there was a hundred and twenty-day notice, it could be canceled?
I don't remember that. I'm not looking to, to cancel. At a five-year term, I would say.
No, no, I'm just saying that it is readjusted in five years.
Would be negotiated again.
It's not an automatic renewal in terms of, it can be canceled if that were the, then council determination.
Are you referencing the paragraph three where it says for an additional five-year term with that hundred and twenty days notice?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's on paragraph three.
I read it.
Yeah. Remember where it was, it been.
And I thought I understood it, but, so that's in there. Now, the percentage rent, I want to talk about that just a minute because I'm not sure I understand. If that is a percentage of sales or exactly what it is a percent of, when I looked at the nine oh nine, that the last one was online, nine ninety, there are a lot of numbers. And there's sales, there's gross sales, net revenue from sales, and then there's gross revenue, net revenue, and then revenue minus expenses, which come, and all of those things you talked about tonight are in there, the specialty plate fees, the passport program, the, so, I kind of see how the money is flowing. And so, I would ask, what percentage are you referencing on a, on a contract?
Sure. Well, a percentage lease, it's a, it's basically, there's a, there's a base rent, which would be the eight hundred and fifty, and then there's a percentage rent that is based on monthly sales after they hit a breakpoint. So, the percentage leases, they don't take a percentage of all their sales, only when they hit a certain breakpoint in, in every given month. And the ones that I've seen, and it could be whatever is negotiated, but I've seen seven percent. So, basically, the breakpoint in sales is the point at which the tenant's percentage rent equals the tenant's base rent. So, in this instance, if eight hundred and fifty dollars was the base rent, then you would divide that number by seven percent and it would come out to twelve thousand one hundred and forty-three. And at that point, every dollar after twelve thousand one forty-three, they would agree to, to pay a percentage rent, again, typical seven percent, by whatever is negotiated, above and beyond twelve thousand one forty-three. And so, with the traffic that goes through there, I just think it's, it's fair. And then those monies could be dedicated to the City of Kingman's tourism program. I certainly want to maintain that relationship and they're doing wonderful things, but I think that this space is really the, the best retail space that we have downtown. And I, I just think that this was fair. But, I mean, people don't have to agree.
I think as far as a, a percentage goes, I would have to sit there and ask, I guess, Ms. Seeger, if, if, if this is in fact, if they would be open to this. I mean, we'd have to go back to the table and start from, I guess, point zero again.
Mr. Cooper, is it acceptable, let a speaker come back up?
We have to send it back. We'll, we'll negotiate some more.
Okay.
I don't think we can negotiate across the board.
No, 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 we cannot. Okay. Yes, sir.
Madam Mayor, the, the comment I see on this is, we knew these negotiations were in effect already. We trust Mr. Kellogg to negotiate for council. If these were things that were of value, shouldn't they have been brought up to him while he was negotiating? He has already negotiated in good faith, and Ms. Seegers is, they've negotiated in good faith. So, why are we trying to change this when he represents us to begin with? You know, these, in other words, we knew these things were going on already. That should have been something that should have been sent to Mr. Foggan, and he could have given to staff to, for, to consideration negotiation. I think we just need to move forward on this.
Mr. Foggan?
Yes, Mayor. So, when we have a negotiation like this, usually what we're trying to get to is a point where we can work from. And taking individual comments from counselors would be extremely difficult. So, it, it has to come to this process and take this kind of feedback to be able, so we, we're basically giving you a document that, you know, we're confident in, okay? There's, we wouldn't bring it if we weren't confident in it. But if this is the council's, really their first opportunity to provide any official feedback on it. Because if, if we, if we did it where we waited for each individual council member to, to share information or ideas on how to get the agreement in place, we would never, we would never be able to roll out an agreement and it would look, it would look like a platypus, if you will. So, that's, that's why I can, I just, our Councilman Watkins, it's, it's, it's really our, our, our best guess at, at an agreement with a long-term, what has been a long-term partner, at least from my understanding of, and, and that's why it's in the form it's in now. And we have taken some feedback on it, and I think that's the agreement that you're seeing right now, is, is it, does it work for the council? Doesn't work for the council. Do you want us to sit down at the table and, and have some more conversations with the association? And they'll, of course, take that to their board and have those conversations and see what they can live with. So, so that's kind of, kind of where we are with it, is, this really is the first opport, official opportunity there is for the council to, to give feedback on it.
Thank you, Mr. Foggan. Are there other comments from council or questions?
Quick question. Are there any, you know, time restraints or deadlines with respect to sending it back just to negotiate or, or to discuss any other possible resolution or, or agreement?
So, they're asking to have, they, they would like to make the remodel happen within their space as soon as possible. They, there's been no deadline, other than I think we're operating without a contract right now.
Month to month, yes.
Yeah, we're month to month. So, the, the deadline is, there's really not a deadline. They would, they would like to get moving on their, their space remodel, and that's contingent on this contract being, or this lease agreement being put into place. But there's no official deadline.
And then, have you or staff dealt with a percentage rate style contract like that before? And if so, is that something that you would recommend? Or do you, are you confident in the deal that you've already come to? Or is there no harm in at least fleshing that out? Or what would be your recommendation?
So, I have never dealt with a percentage lease agreement from the city perspective. I'm not saying it's, it's unusual, but it's not something that I've dealt with. The lease that Gary and I brought you is a pretty standard lease that the, that the, a city would enter into. And again, it can get as complex or, and I, I totally agree, we, we need to, we need to be cognizant of the money that is coming in. And, you know, that's, so it's a blending from Gary and I's perspective, is we've got a, a partner that we think has our best interests in mind, helping, helping us, and I think vice versa. So, that it's been that, that blending of a, of a great partnership, you know, when, when they came to us and said, hey, we're willing to help you make improvements to the powerhouse building itself, you know, that, that's not something that a typical partner, just in a lease agreement, would, would volunteer. So, you know, there, what we're bringing to you, I, I think, is our best effort to recognize a nonprofit organization in our space. But I, you know, obviously, from Vice Mayor's comments, we, we have to be, I think, we have to take into account the, you know, are we getting the value out of the, out of the lease that, that we need to get out? Again, there's not a lot of businesses, private sector side, that would offer up what, you know, ten thousand here and ten thousand there is part of their, of their lease agreement. So, I'm, I'm fairly confident in it, as far as what we've brought forward. We are definitely open to whatever the council would like to do. And I know that the association, at least my conversations with, with Nikki are that, that they would like to get this done. And they're, obviously, if we, we want to sit back down at the table, I don't think they're going to go running screaming and yelling. I think they'd prefer to have it done. But, you know, if the council's preference is to have it, to, to have something else added to it, Gary and I'll work on that.
I think it's also important to note that, you know, I think the, the association brings value that's not necessarily quantifiable specifically by direct sales. I think that they bring a lot of value to the community and, and, you know, advertising for Kingman and, and all that too. So, while they may be on the, the lower range of fair market value for that rental space, I think they also bring other value to the table as well, just to throw that out there.
Any other comments? Or I would, actually, I'd entertain a motion on this and we can have discussion after the motion.
Mayor, I'd like to move, unless.
I'm sorry, we can have a discussion later.
Okay. I'd like to move that we, we approve this lease.
There's a motion to approve the lease. Is there a second?
All second.
Motion and a second to approve the lease. We can now discuss.
And I would just say that this is just meant to be very respectful business discussion. That's it. I mean, there's no harm in, in talking about this stuff in an open forum, and that's what we're really doing. So, the only reason I thought about this was, you know, we're elected to serve Kingman, and Kingman's tourism advertising marketing budget is, is small, and I was just looking for another opportunity to, to supplement that and bolster that while we don't, we negotiate something that's not going to harm our partner. You know, I went off of the IRS Form 990, which staff sent to us. It showed us three hundred and twenty-three thousand, six hundred and fifteen gross sales of inventory less returns and allowances. That was for 2016. So, at a base rent of eight fifty a month, the breakpoint for that would be twelve thousand, one hundred and forty-three dollars a month. If you take twelve thousand, one hundred and forty-three dollars a month times twelve months, that's a hundred and forty-five thousand, seven hundred and sixteen. If you subtract one hundred and forty-five, seven sixteen from three twenty-three, six fifteen, that's a hundred and seventy-seven thousand, eight hundred and ninety-nine. Seven percent of that number would be twelve thousand, four hundred and fifty-two dollars a month. Just, it's just a prediction or an estimate or whatever, right? And if you were to take that out for five years, that would be sixty-two thousand dollars that would go into the tourism budget. So, that's why I, I put it, put it out there, so.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Other comments? There's motion on the floor to accept the contract for the Route 66 Association of Arizona. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay.
No.
Eyes have it. Motion carries. Next order of business is the Wild and Exotic Animals Performance Prohibition. Staff was directed to draft an ordinance that prohibited the public performance of wild and exotic animals. This ordinance defines wild and exotic animals very specifically. It excludes those animals that are normally associated with rural agricultural activities such as horses, cattle, llamas, pigs, and the like. In addition, this ordinance will have no effect upon assistive service animals. The ordinance will not affect educational efforts of FFA, 4H, or, or governmental-sponsored events such as those done by game and fish. Staff recommends approval. We have some people signed up to speak to this, and the first one will be Vicki Crest. Well, first of all, I'm sorry, Vicki. Did anyone want to speak to this, to the council on this?
Well, I just want to make sure that everybody understands. Sorry.
Sorry, Vicki.
Sorry, Vicki. You can come down. It won't be, it won't take me very long. The, just wanted to let everybody know that, that in, in, when this issue came up, the, the city does not have any process within their, their special events permitting that would allow us to monitor or stop these activities. And so, from, from our, for our perspective, the council had adopted about eighteen months ago, nineteen months ago, they adopted a resolution, basically making a statement to the world, to the community, that they did not support any mistreatment of animals. And so, through that process, the, there is a circus coming to town, and that was made known to us. And we were been asked, that we were asked to kind of look at our permitting process to, to, to be able to examine the business that was coming and to see about not granting them a permit. In looking at our permitting process, we just do not have the authority to do that. So, that's, that's kind of where we are. So, that's, that's kind of where we are to date on what we can and cannot do with, with special events, with this special event in particular, so.
Thank you. So, this count, this ordinance was revised and brought back to council, and now we will entertain comments. Vicki Kress.
Thank you, Mayor Miles and council. My name is Vicki Kress. I'm a citizen of the city of Kingman. I doubt that there's a person here who would want to harm an animal, but the fact is exotic animals in circuses are abused every day, whether it's intentionally or just through how they have to live their life. I understand the southwestern culture and role that rodeos have always played in our city in the southwest, and I respect that. We're not talking about rodeos. We're talking about exotic animals that are chained, caged, trucked every day of their lives. This issue's come before council before, and I believe the primary concern was unintended consequences. And if staff has not already delivered an ordinance to you tonight that you can sign, I would then challenge staff to go back and develop that ordinance. So, there are no concerns about rodeos being next, or horses in parades being next. That's not what this discussion is about, and I know that that is not the intention of this ordinance. So, I appreciate that rodeos are vibrant, they are essential to our culture, to our region, and that's not what we're discussing here tonight. And just another note on a separate topic, even though he's gone, I'd like to thank Mr. Pettit for remembering our good friend, Mr. Dick Meyer. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Kress. The next speaker will be Patrick Rogers.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I appreciate the opportunity to speak on this subject. My wife and I, Dr. Sally Lane, are new residents to Kingman. We have been involved in veterinary work, physical rehabilitation, prosthetics, and orthotics, especially for clinically ill and rescue abuse cases from all over the U.S. and internationally. We've been members of the Board of Directors of the Keepers of the Wild for the past four years and are now working there full-time, myself as park manager, my wife, Dr. Lane, as the full-time veterinary care director. From infancy, we are beset with images of animals in cartoons, movies, portrayed in unnatural characters. And as we do that, we start to become detached as to how they really are in the wild and how we become to expect to be entertained as a learned behavior. The circus comes to town excited, people go to experience them as a form of entertainment and forget that they are far from their natural selves and environment. Those animals are wild animals whose natural homes are far away from the cities they are forced to perform in. They are far away from their natural behaviors, which involve roaming vast territories, living in their, with their families, hunting and raising their young. What they do not do in the wild are silly, are a series of silly tricks. An elephant does not sit down as a human would and throw back her trunk in the air while another elephant steps on her back. Tigers do not pose on pedestals on their hind legs or jump through hoops. The behaviors we see in the circus are not natural to the animals at all. They are forced behaviors that are taught to them from the time they are young. They are behavioral manipulations that have been learned through starvation, infliction of pain or injury, alienation from others, light deprivation, and other repulsive forms of animal abuse. The circus has lied to us from the time we were small, causing us to think that whipping tigers or making elephants stand on their heads is normal. When those activities are anything but normal, they are blatant animal abuse, and the only true reason for it is to line the pocketbooks of the companies who enslave the animals, depriving them from their homes, their families, and their freedom, which is all any sentient being would like to have, human or animal. The physical abuse leads to a number of skeletal, muscular, and mental emotional disorders that are inflicted on them for the sake of profit, not care. I please ask you to please consider your own logo and how beautiful that is and that animal in its own environment, and I please ask the city to adopt this ordinance and approve it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Paul Gaines.
Mayor, council members, just very briefly, I'm for this ordinance, and I'm also for rodeo and 4H, and that's all I want to say. I concur with the previous speaker. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Gaines. Sarah Ferry.
Hi. How are you guys doing? Thanks so much for all your hard work, and thank you for hearing me today. I'm Sarah Ferry, Kingman resident, and I just wanted to speak to you about this ordinance. I think that it's the right thing to do for a couple of reasons. One, we spoke before and you made this resolution, and this resolution is a promise to the community. And if you are not going to take your resolution seriously, then, you know, in the future, we may not think that your resolutions are very, you know, meaningful. Another reason is that I think we really need to support our sanctuary here. We're talking tonight about a group that does a lot for our community, and I, another group that does a lot for our community is the Keepers of the Wild. And they have a sanctuary because of circuses and because of things like this where people abuse animals, and thankfully, they're rescued and taken care of at their sanctuary. When we came and spoke to you the first time about the resolution, it's because there was a group as, quote unquote, sanctuary coming to town with their elephants, and there were some undercover videos that were going around with these very trainers and the abuse. And my son and I watched this video, and honestly, I never would have let him watch it if I knew the kind of abuse that we were going to see on these videos. They spoke with high school students that were having a speech and debate group, and they debate, they were debating that whether circuses were ethical, and this was within their school. And they came to our fair to meet these trainers and talk to them, and they had come to a consensus that the circuses were not ethical amongst each other. And when they came and they met these people, these people said that they had a sanctuary and that they trained these elephants through positive reinforcement and treats. And then we watched this video of those very trainers abusing these animals, hitting them with hooks and stunning, and shocking them with electricity, and it was terrible. And I went to our fair and I looked at those two trainers in the face, and that was those very people that I watched on that video. There were kids there protesting this, and I just don't think that we need to support this kind of activity in our community. This is not the same as our rodeos. And I read the ordinance, and I read the exceptions that you put in there, and you went way out of your way to exclude all of the rodeo activities, and you went as far as excluding the falconry and the parts of the things that are our heritage. You know, I have lived here my whole life, and ranchers care for their animals. This circus is not the same thing. Thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you, Ms. Ferry.
And Riley would like to say something, if you don't mind.
Riley? Go ahead.
I, I don't think it is acceptable that they straight up lied to these children about saying that they have a sanctuary, and I don't think it's acceptable abusing animals. Because if you look at them like humans, you just see them in a different perspective, and you don't think it's as acceptable, or not acceptable at all, to hit them, or kick them, or whip them, or electrocute them, or shock them, or anything. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. That's very courageous. Has anyone else signed up to speak to this? Two years ago, or about 18 months ago, the city council passed a resolution. Oh, I'm sorry.
We're signed up.
Okay, I am, I was...
Yes.
Where are they? Please bear with us for just a moment. All of these people have spoken. Linda, I don't, I don't think I have anymore. Okay, I'm just going to invite, if you have, if you would like to...
They're up in the back.
I'll bet they are.
They're up here.
Ah, they're in the back. Thank you, Ms. Sarah Ferry.
You're welcome.
Okay, that's, that's more like what I expected. The next speaker will be Karen Malillo.
Thank you so much, Mayor Miles and everybody here on the city council. My name is Karen Malillo. I live in Rimrock, Arizona. I've been an Arizona resident since 1985. I have friends and family in Kingman, Valentine, and Hackberry. Up until recently, I had no idea of the reality of circus life for wild and exotic animals. I was ignorant, but then I saw a video of six elephants being beaten with bullhooks as they stood still, not even moving except to flinch or scream out. I was shocked, but I started researching. I discovered that the training methods have been passed on through generations of circus trainers. Many circuses do not own their animals. Carden family leases out elephants, camels, and wild cats to circuses such as Garden Brothers and Jordan World Circus. Some of the Carden elephants have been diagnosed with tuberculosis. Handlers are also often carriers, and they assist families onto the elephant rides. Tuberculosis is transmittable to humans as it is airborne and is one of the most deadly infectious diseases in the world. I believe that if parents were aware of the safety risk, they would never want their children near these animals. I was ignorant, too. I understand. Folks are unaware of the danger to their children. There are hundreds of cases where these animals have been pushed to the limits, have attacked or killed their handlers, injured circus goers, or escaped the circus grounds. The circus arena is not safe. Does Kingman Animal Control have a safety plan in place at these circuses? All of the data on public safety risks is available online, and much has been provided to the city council. Trainers rely on very cruel methods to incite fear to make the animals perform, such as shocking, beating, and burning. It is understandable why they could lash out or run amok. I realize there is concern that if this ordinance passes, that somehow this will translate to other animal acts such as rodeos. The ordinance specifically excludes acts such as rodeos. These shows are part of the cultural heritage of Arizona. Many of the participants are local residents versus a circus traveling in from out of state. The animals used in rodeos are usually owned by the performers and are well-fed and cared for. The lives of circus animals are a far cry from a beloved family horse who competes in rodeos. There are 92 U.S. jurisdictions in 32 states and 45 other countries that have laws in place against these circuses. They have done all of their homework, even for years before they made a decision. I am here to plead with you, the city council, to vote for this ordinance. Please take an informed stand against these abusive and archaic shows, and in doing so, protect the health and well-being of the public. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for coming here tonight.
Thank you, ma'am.
And closer to home, Mr. Keith Kittner.
I'm Keith Kittner. I'm speaking on behalf of myself tonight, but I'm also on the Board of Directors with the County Fair Association. The ordinance itself is probably a very good idea. I think we need a little bit more work on it, because I know the USDA licenses and certifies a lot of the exhibitors that, that are out there. I know there's some exhibits such, that come from zoos and things like that, that would, that would be more than acceptable and have the certification. Some of the circuses have gone overboard to try and stay within the requirements of the U.S. Department of Agriculture, to stick with this. So, we need to take a look and make sure that we make allowances for USDA licensed and certified exhibitors to be part of this, too, as well as the other exemptions. So, that's where I stand on it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Danette Zachary.
Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. My name is Danette Zachary. I live just off the road in Hackberry. I strongly support an animal circus ban ordinance. In a perfect world, no one would attend these types of circuses because exploited animals performing unnatural coerced stupid tricks isn't fun for anyone, animals or human spectators. No one would attend because paying for tickets means paying for abuse. Anyone who has done even a little research knows wild animals do not belong in circuses. By their very nature, these circuses are terribly abusive to the animals due to constant travel, extreme forms of confinement, the lack of anything remotely resembling a natural existence, and cruel and violent training methods. Simply put, circus animals are slaves who live in fear. This teaches children that a lifetime of suffering for animals is a fair trade for a few minutes of human entertainment, and it goes to show that current animal welfare laws and lack of enforcement are not good enough to protect these animals from harm. We need to do better. Unfathomable logic in comparison to rodeos, dog or rabbit shows is like comparing apples to oranges. The theoretical slippery slope argument is an excuse to do the wrong thing, which is nothing. The use of wild animals in traveling circuses is widely considered to be morally unacceptable in the present day, as is evidenced by bans so far in 92 local U.S. jurisdictions in 32 states and 45 entire nations around the globe. Growing public awareness and disapproval is on a grassroots level among everyday people, not just big groups like PETA. When this issue was on the agenda previously, Mayor Miles, who was then a councilwoman, suggested that people should vote with their pocketbook, and I wholeheartedly agree with the notion of boycotting these circuses. But by passing this ordinance, the animals would be protected from those who would knowingly and cruelly exploit them, those who choose to willfully remain ignorant and soulless individuals who don't care. This ordinance will be a victory for animal welfare and common sense and proves that politicians who have belief, stick to their principles, and persevere despite hostile opposition can still shape events. Compassion for these kindred animals demands that we reject this cruelty and find kinder entertainment. This will happen only when people are willing to say, this is wrong, I won't be complicit in this abuse. It is time to return these broken-spirited animals their dignity, retire them to sanctuaries, and for us to become worthy of sharing the planet with them. Thank you.
Thank you. Carolyn Long.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. My name's Carolyn Long. I live in Lake Havasu City. I want to talk to you about how we are misleading our children with these circuses. Children in Kingman have the wonderful opportunity to visit a wildlife sanctuary very close to town that has 50 species of animals and close to 200 animals living there. At Keepers of the Wild, the children hear the stories of the animals who performed in circuses and entertainment venues, and how they lived a life of misery before coming to live out the rest of their lives in peace at Keepers of the Wild. Then the children go home and go to school, where they get free tickets to the circus. How hypocritical is that? And do you forbid your kids from watching Animal Planet? Because on Animal Planet, your kids will see shows of lions and tigers and monkeys being rescued from circuses in South America, and they will see shows about elephants being freed from their chains and living in peace in sanctuaries. These were shows on Saturday nights a few months ago. So, if you're going to vote no to this ordinance, you better not allow your kids to watch Animal Planet, because they will be asking you why. Planet because they will be asking you why we have the abusive circus coming to Kingman. I keep hearing the excuse that the rodeo and circus are a Western tradition and are part of our cultural heritage. The rodeo is indeed part of our Western culture, and the rodeo uses livestock animals. The circus uses exotic and wild animals, totally different. And the circus is no more a part of Western culture than it is in Vermont, Mississippi, Wisconsin, or any other state. The circus originated in New York and traveled the rails throughout the United States for decades. Animals were brought from Africa by the boatloads, and only twenty percent of them survived the trip across the ocean. Is that the kind of cultural heritage you want to preserve in this day and age? We are not trying to get rid of the rodeo, or the circus for that matter. We are asking that circuses use human performers rather than animals, like lions, tigers, bears, and elephants. Former Mojave County Supervisor Steve Moss tried to get an ordinance passed in the county, and it was because of his integrity and moral judgment that he was chosen by the governor to be a Superior Court Judge in Arizona. Martha McSally, our Senator, co-sponsors a bill in Congress called the TIPS Act. This stands for Traveling Exotic Animal Public Safety Protection Act, and would ban the use of exotic and wild animals in circuses. I urge you to follow these strong and moral leaders in Arizona and join them in taking action for these animals that have been and continue to be brutalized with whips, bullhooks, and other instruments of torture in the circus. By passing this ordinance, you won't be stopping the circus, you won't be stopping the use of all animals in the circus. You will only be stopping the use of exotic and wild animals like lions, tigers, bears, and elephants. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Long. Tim Woods.
Madam Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, the city council, thank you for having me and good evening. My name is Tim Woods. I am the general manager of Mojave County Fairgrounds, and I am against this ordinance. Not only am I against this ordinance, but Arizona Fair Association, International Fair Association, Western Fairs Association are also against this ordinance. We have looked at it. We've had the legal representative look at it. It is a slippery slope for a lot of different things that will come down the line. Going with the videos that people have seen of people abusing animals, ladies and gentlemen, on the internet, you can watch a fellow burst into flames, beat up one thousand bad guys, land on the ground, and his hair isn't singed. So you can make anything look real on a video, especially on the internet. Ladies and gentlemen, also economics. If anybody's been to the fairgrounds in the past year, I've been running it a year and two months, we have made huge strides in bringing back pride to this fairgrounds. By passing this ordinance, you take away over half of the entertainment and educational things that come to the fairgrounds, that rent the fairgrounds, and also entertain the kids. And so by doing that, that retards my ability to improve the fairgrounds. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for having me. Good night.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. Thomas Long.
My name is Thomas Long, and I appreciate having the opportunity to speak with you, Mayor, and city council members. I am a Mojave County resident and would like to speak to you about some circus performers have been under arrest now for some decades. I'm going to read you some quotes from Dr. Gay Bradshaw, widely-known author, nominee for the Pulitzer Prize in Literature, well-known advocate for the welfare of animals. After getting her PhDs in both ecology and psychology, she went on to study animals for decades and has some specific thoughts about whether animals should be performing in circus venues. The following are quoted comments taken by permission from a letter she wrote recently to a city council not unlike your own. She is quoted as saying that her studies about elephants and many other animals define how they experience pain, fear, grief, emotional attachments, social stress, empathy, and consciousness. She added that indeed neuroscientists, through imaging studies and fieldwork, have found their brains and minds with cognitive functions comparable to and even exceeding some of our own. She also stated that elephants possess the highest intelligence and sensibilities and how they need to be in social groups. She mentioned how traumatic it is to take these social creatures from their group with violent capture, submitting them to all manner of psychological and physical pain for violent so-called training and decades of continued confinement. She had very negative comments regarding limiting their range of motion, restricting their movements, and subjecting them to relentless pain and domination done strictly for our entertainment in the circus and other venues. And lastly, she defined in detail the kinds of diseases they suffer physically, psychologically, and spiritually from this kinds of abuse. She further believes that all these wild and exotic animals who have suffered so long for our entertainment alone should be released to sanctuaries like Keepers of the Wild to live out their days with some dignity and some semblance of health hopefully restored. She asks that these changes, that is, all animals be removed from circus venues, to be considered from an ethical perspective, and note that such horrific treatment towards any animals, including humans, is considered an ethical outrage and banned by most civilized countries. But then I thought, after listening to all the speakers here tonight, you realize and know all these things. So in the interest of not being redundant, repeating what you already know, I'm going to ask you something else. I just have one basic question to ask you. As your children and grandchildren grow up, they witness the world that we have created for them, which was a world that we have all sanctioned and thus created. The only question I have for you is one which I have no answer, and that question is, will God forgive us for what we have done to our species, our animals, our environment, and the world around us? If you live long enough to see your children and grandchildren grow into these questions, and I see a lot of you already have, you will have to answer that question.
Thank you, Mr. Long. Last speaker is Jonathan Kraft.
Good evening, Mayor Miles, the mayor pro temp, and council members. Well, it's kind of all been said. I'm the founder and director, by the way, of Keepers of the Wild. It's kind of all been said already here tonight, and so I do want an FYI to the young man. I really respect him a lot for a young man like that to come up here and speak for the animals. Kudos to him. What I want to talk to you about tonight is actually, I don't want to bore you with statistics and all of that. I know you receive volumes of information from organizations, such as ADI and other organizations, wonderful organizations, a hundred percent fact, and I support them greatly. I'm going to come to speak to you from my own personal experience. Now, I am pretty sure that all of you don't abuse animals, and I'm sure the vast majority of people behind me don't abuse animals. Well, if you don't abuse animals, then I'm sure you're not for animal abuse, and that is what I want to speak to you about tonight. Some people don't understand the word abuse. It doesn't mean just food deprivation or beating animals, but animals living in little boxes their entire life. Just imagine, you acquire a horse, or you acquire a dog, and now you get this horse home, and you're going to stick it in a barn, and you're going to keep it there for fifteen years without ever taking it out, or maybe for its ten minutes of fame on a stage. Or you take your dog, you put him in a kennel. No, most people let their dog play in the yard, or they take him out to the dog park, or they take him for a walk, or your horse is put to pasture, or whatever. Wild animals don't have that opportunity. You can't say, "Oh, I'm going to exercise my tiger. Let me chain him up and walk him around the block." You know, this is the most horrific form of abuse imaginable, and I want to give you one quick example. The most recent rescue that we did was of five bears. They came out of a facility in Texas. This was a roadside freak show that would go around and exhibit these animals. These bears, first of all, is when they're transported, they live in a three-by-five cage, transported from city to city. When they weren't being transported and they were at home, I've been there, they live four bears, four of the five, living in a twelve-by-twelve cage with a concrete floor, full of feces, bear spots on their butts with a hair at warrenoff, and the other bear, because it was the youngest, lived in a three-by-five cage. That's what they lived in for twenty-eight years. This is appalling. This can't happen. I want Kingman to be, I want to be proud of Kingman. I want it to set an example of not allowing this abuse to go on in our city, and I hope that you support me in passing this ordinance tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kraft. Did anyone else sign up to speak, Melinda? Okay. I want to thank everyone for your comments, and I appreciate the council tonight being able to hear all of these comments. You know that eighteen months or nineteen months ago, the city council passed a resolution condemning the exploitation and abuse of wild and exotic animals in traveling shows and circuses, and the council believed that that resolution could be a basis for denying permits for entities such as are coming in. At least that is my understanding. And when it was brought to the city's attention, that Garden Brothers was scheduled to be in Kingman, it was determined that the resolution did not provide the authority to deny the permit, and therefore, we revised this ordinance to exclude many of the animals that are important to our community and to, well, to anyone really, that is involved in rodeos and falconry and whatnot, and we brought it back. Tonight, we've heard comments from both sides, and this council has had the opportunity to listen to these comments, but has not had a chance to discuss the issue, and for two reasons, I am going to make a motion to table this ordinance until April 2nd council meeting. And the first reason is that this council needs time to consider the comments and the information provided on the subject, and time tonight is very limited. We must move, we must move through this agenda because we do have an executive session, and we also have a timeline from the county to be out of this building. So I don't think we will be able to give it legitimate discussion. But secondly, there is an additional option for addressing this issue that has not yet been brought to council, but will be ready to bring forth by next month. Mojave County is in the process of reworking its contract with the fairgrounds, and they have offered to work with the city to develop an administrative process in which the city can deny certain controversial events involving circuses, carnivals, et cetera, based on a set of criteria that will be developed, and the fairgrounds' management has been amenable to this approach. And at the April 2nd council meeting, I would ask that the agreement between the city council and the city, the county, and the fairgrounds come to council and be considered as one option to this ordinance. This does not exclude this ordinance from being considered. However, the council needs to consider any viable option to achieve the desired results. So I would ask the council to support this stance, and I move to table this ordinance until the April 2nd, 2019 council meeting, and have it returned with two options that, but the option that you have not seen yet, we, none of us have seen yet, which will be an administrative agreement between the city and county and fairgrounds. And that is my motion. And I would entertain a second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I just had one thing, and you can add this to your motion or not. I just, I know that there have been communities out there who have also discussed, you know, a ban on certain instruments that are specifically designed to be, you know, inhumane. Maybe that's a third option and/or a counterpart to an existing option. Maybe there's other things that can be explored as well. So hopefully, we don't just limit it to the two, although it's your motion, so I would...
Well, I think that's the type of thing that would be considered in the criteria. At this point, our attorney and the county attorney have been assigned to work together in the next few weeks, actually, to create this, and that will include that criteria list, which I would like to see include no performing elephants. And we've had that discussion, but that's the type of criteria that could be included. But again, it goes back to what, it is enforceable, and so I'm going to rely on our, Mr. Cooper, to work with, to work with the county attorney. Do you have any comments, Mr. Cooper?
Just that, obviously, we'll sit down and see what's, what works for the three parties involved, so.
Well, and please take into account the request that has been made tonight, to the extent that, that I know you have to make sure that it's something that when it comes to the city, it has to be denied based on a reasonable set of criteria. But to me, performing elephants would be a part of that reasonable set of criteria. So I know it's difficult to get something quickly, but I'm asking that this be done by April 2nd.
We're going to do our best.
And this will be integrated into the Mojave County contract with the fairgrounds, as well as the agreement between the city and council. So that will be an option that will be coming back with the ordinance. And I guess I would add to my motion that the ordinance be screened again, just to make sure that anything that has been brought up during the discussion tonight that looks like slippery slope, quote unquote, be addressed. So I amend my, can I amend my own motion? I move that we table this issue until April 2nd, and that the city bring back two options to council with, including a review of the ordinance that hears tonight based on comments that have been made.
And I feel confident that was pretty much implied in our understanding, staff's understanding, that was pretty much implied in your original motion with the second, so I don't think you necessarily have to amend it.
Oh, good. Thank you.
We feel comfortable with direction.
Is there any other discussion?
That might actually be something that we could benefit from, taking a look at Martha McSally's present era, the law she's trying to pass at this stage, might be something to look at. It's very specific to traveling exotic, so it may take care of exactly what we're after.
And I'm not aware of that, so I'll have to look and see.
This was new tonight, so.
That's a really good point, and I, if we can get that information on Steve Moss's ordinance and also Martha McSally, that might be helpful in looking at ours.
Yeah, when, the one from the county appeared eighteen, nineteen months ago, we had looked at that and...
Okay.
And worked on ours, and there's a number of them that are across the country that are out there, so.
We appreciate Judge Moss's efforts and want to make sure they're looked at. Any other comments?
I'd just like to say, I'm glad to hear that the Fair Association will be at the table for that, and we need to come together as a community in some way to bring a resolution to this issue. So I'm glad that you're going to be at the table. Thank you.
I have a motion and a second to bring back two options at the April 2nd council meeting on this issue. All in favor, aye. Aye. Any opposed, nay. Ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you all for being here about this issue. Come back next month. Okay, now we move to announcements by mayor, council members, and city manager. This is limited to announcements, board and commission liaison reports, availability, attendance at conferences, and seminars. Manager Foggan, would you like to start?
I just want to let the council know that our, our building department did a fantastic job on our council chambers, and per the requirement for notification for moving our council meetings, we will be making that announcement, or publishing that information, and we will be back in our home the second council meeting in April. So just wanted to make sure that everybody knew, and just, I just can't say enough about what a great job our folks did on the space, and I think it's going to be just a wonderful place for us to hold our public meetings, so just wanted everybody to know that.
Thank you. Councilman Watkins.
Mayor, actually, you were there last week at Clean City Commission, and so was I, and just wanted to recognize again the youth and the great artwork that was given to Clean City Commission for... to Clean City Commission for pushing forward recycling, and anyway, there was some great artwork there.
It was a great, a great, great meeting, and I see Mr. C. Russell out in the audience, and he, he did a great job of helping MC that whole event, and thank you for your work on the commission. Councilman Wade?
I have nothing to add. Thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Nelson?
Nothing. This evening, Madam Mary.
Well, I would just like to thank staff and the efforts that have been made on the legislative session, because we did go to Phoenix, and we have been testifying on some of the important legislative issues for the city, and I was pleased to be able to go down and represent us on the water initiative, working with Representative Cobb, so, thank you, and also Manager Foggan, and Mr. Cooper, and others who went down and are going down again, because this is the legislative session. So, that's really all the announcements at this time, and so, we will move into council requests for future work session agenda items and/or calendar adjustments. Are there any requests for council work session?
I would only make one comment. It looked as though maybe there were six topics on our next meeting, and in a 90-minute work session, we'd only be able to talk like 15 minutes on each one of those topics, so maybe...
Sorry.
...pull those, spread those out a little bit.
Actually, just looking at the, at the items, some of them are very short, unless the council's planning on a lot of dialogue on some of them, I would guess that several of them would be a max of 10 minutes, so I have been weighing that, so I appreciate you catching that, but looking at it, I think we will, we will be able to cover that pretty easily, so.
Great. Thank you.
Being cognizant of that, thank you.
I have one question. Is the sidewalk issue on a work session, upcoming work session? The barriers on the sidewalk?
Yes. Yep.
Okay. Thank you. That has been requested from members of the public. Executive session, the council needs to go into executive session to discuss the City of Kingman and KRMC development agreement, and I would entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Motion to enter into executive session.
Motion and second. All in favor, aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, nay. We're going, we have eyes carry it. Go into executive session. Thank you, Tom. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Eyes have it. Good night.